Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, June 14th at 7:00 PM. And tonight, we have a public hearing. We have some committee meetings, and then we will have a special session of council. We'll lead off with a public hearing for the designated outdoor refreshment area. This is an application that has been presented to council by the Athens Uptown Business Association, along with the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. And like several other cities who already have this in place, Athens is considering moving forward with this. It would be in a designated area that has been measured by our Public Works Director to be 45 acres. It would operate in a very specific time from May 7th to August 15th. And in this designated area in which signs would be placed. And there would be, I think, some extra measures taken these first few years. And then set up with a review in five years to see how council feels about the plan and how it's been operating. I thought I'd turn it over to Councilmember Crowell for perhaps any additional comments. And then also some comments from council members that I think have received comments from public. And then we also have attendees who are welcome to make comments also during this public hearing time. So we'll proceed next with Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. Just a few things about the DORA, the Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area. This does not mean you can bring your own drink from home and saunter through downtown. This is about going into an establishment, purchasing a proper designated cup, and being able to leave those premises within the area. And perhaps depending on those retail stores that will allow you to come in with your cup, you might be able to shop while you were enjoying your beverage depending on the decisions of each individual business in downtown Athens. As discussed at previous meetings, the Subcommittee for Athens Uptown Business Association and the Chamber of Commerce have been doing their due diligence to study this. They also learned recently that they have been connected to a class program in the business school, and the class is going to take on examining different Doras throughout the state of Ohio to provide the Subcommittee with additional information as this project goes forward. That's about all I have, Isley.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Crowell. And do we have comments or questions from other council members? We'll lead off with that. Councilmember Smedley, yes.
Thank you, President Isley. I do have five items to go over, and I'll be very quick because I do want to leave plenty of time for the public to also share their thoughts. What I have is a mix of questions that I'm not expecting answers tonight, but just to pose them tonight, and perhaps we can get a follow-up at a future date, and then a few comments. The first item relates to the area around staffing for law enforcement. The proposal mentions for police officers will be available during the hours. And so I had two questions related to that, which is, just to confirm that we have enough staffing to do that, and if we do, would that put any strain on law enforcement in other areas of the city if they're designated to those areas?
Would you like me to answer that?
If you have answers to any of these, please feel free. But again, if you don't, if you need to come back with answers, that's totally fine, too.
No, I certainly have an answer for you, Councilmember Smedley. You know, on any given shift for the police department, there are, you know, between three and four police officers on shift. And that would include during the academic year, a Friday and Saturday night in the uptown area. So with the DORA, given that it's going to run through the summer months, in my conversations with Chief Pyle, that it's fine. Everything will be treated the same as we typically do treat the uptown area. Again, during a time when we have a whole lot of student body from Ohio University here. So again, in talk conversations with not only Chief Pyle, but with Captain Harvey, that everyone's comfortable with us.
Okay, appreciate that. The second item had to deal with the cups and the potential for additional trash outside. And I already had a conversation with Mayor Patterson about this. This is just a matter of updating everyone. The question that was posed to me was, should be concerned about adding additional trashcans uptown to accommodate the extra trash? And the mayor seems confident that not only with what we have uptown, but also with our contract with the trash company and recycling company that we currently work with, that they will be monitoring that, and assigning fines if necessary. So I just wanted to share that as a comment. The third item related to the businesses within the footprint of the DORA. We have, from what I understand, been in close communication with many of the bars and other establishments that sell alcohol that would be potentially participating in the DORA. I would just recommend reaching out to some of the businesses where they might be, that are not those sorts of establishments, but might be impacted by the DORA. Ensuring that they're aware that it's coming. And that would offer an opportunity, one, to gauge their support or non-support, and also address any concerns that those business owners may have. So that would be a recommendation for the Uptown Business Association. Two more items. I'll be quick. In rereading the proposal, I did find this item, and it did offer me a bit of assurance on the monitoring of this new proposal. It states, "Beginning with the commencement of the DORA, continuing for a period of six months, the Service Safety Director of the City of Athens shall actively monitor and review the safety plan herein for the purpose of determining whether updates, modifications, or supplementation may be advised or required, and incentive then make necessary changes." And this was talked about previously, and I just wanted to bring this back up again and actually read the verbiage and share that with you all, that that is in there and was thought about ahead of time. And the last item I wanted to share was, or at least ask, is if there was a cost to participating businesses in it to get the DORA permit? And if not, if there would, I don't know if it's even allowable, because I know this is a state-regulated opportunity. But if that was explored, and if it was a possibility, that might help mitigate any costs associated with administering this program. That was it.
Okay. Thanks for the comments. Yep. And Mayor Patterson, yes, did you have a comment back in return?
Well, I do. I am not 100% sure about the cost of having to get now, you know, a permit that also has the DORA indicator on the liquor permit, if that's what you were referring to. And it is interesting, you know, not all establishments that serve alcohol in whatever form have to be, take part in the DORA. I mean, there could be establishments that just say, no, and they'll have an indicator, a decal in their window that indicates that, that this is not a DORA establishment. So that's up to the business owner, you know, as to whether they want to take part in the DORA or not. So I don't know if that answers your comment, your statement, but I just wanted to share that with everyone.
Mayor, Councilmember Reisner.
Yes, I was contacted also by a business that will be within the DORA with several bars nearby. And the concerns that was expressed by this person has pretty much been answered by Councilmember Smedley and the mayor. I don't have to repeat the questions because I think they've already been answered or at least addressed. But I did want to acknowledge to this person that it has been brought up before council, and, you know, we heard and we've taken action.
Okay, thank you. And any other council members or elected officials who want to make a comment? And now I want to make sure that we allow enough time for our attendees who are here. Is there anyone amongst the attendees with us tonight who would like to make a comment about this proposal for the designated outdoor refreshment area? Okay. One last opportunity. And if none, we will consider the public hearing closed at 7:12 PM. And we'll now move into our committee meetings for the evening. The first one is City and Safety Services, and this is chaired by Councilmember Grace and joined by Councilmembers Fall and McCary.
Thank you, President Isley, and welcome, Member McCary, to our committee and council. The first item on our committee agenda is the New Emergency Response Initiative. And it's my understanding that we have a guest who is going to speak to us regarding this. Is that correct, Member Smedley?
Yes, I believe so. I'm not sure I'm seeing that person here tonight, unfortunately. And I apologize, I have not received an update as to whether or not she was able to attend. So maybe we postpone this item? Oh, I see a handout. It's just a different name than I was prepared for.
Okay.
And I'll do a brief intro, sorry. Now that I--
Please, yes, go ahead.
Yeah. Diane Foff, it says Colin Foff, but yeah. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. She is the Director of the 317 Board. And I had heard through another community meeting about a new initiative that they are working on with some other community partners. And I'll let her elaborate, but I thought our fellow council members and other members of the, other attendees and folks who are listening in tonight would be very interested in this very cool initiative, and just so we're all aware that it's coming. So I'll hand it off to you, Diane. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Smedley, President Isley, Mayor, all the council members. I appreciate being here for a few minutes to share about this new service that we're bringing online. As you may be aware, the 317 Board contracts with Hopewell Health Centers to respond to persons who are in a mental health crisis. And we do that work in collaboration with a lot of different community partners, most notably law enforcement, who are often first on the scene at the time of a crisis. We have an excellent working relationship with all of our law enforcement partners, and we really greatly, greatly appreciate their work. For many years now, the protocol has been to direct people to the local emergency room where the mental health evaluation takes place. And while this has been useful in many situations, it's also, we found it not to be necessary for all crisis situations. When we looked at our data from 2019, of the nearly 3,000 crisis episodes, only about a quarter of those were acute enough to require an inpatient hospitalization, which means that the vast majority of people are able to have their needs met with a community safety plan and follow-up services. So after looking at this data, and thanks to funding from the Dewine Administration, we have created a mobile outreach team that will be made up of a Hopewell Health Center clinician and a paramedic from Athens County EMS. The team will be dispatched from an enhanced crisis call line at Hopewell Health Centers, and they'll be able to travel by car to the location of the person in crisis, no longer requiring everyone to go to the emergency room. We're really excited about this. It's a major step forward. It's going to be more trauma-informed and more accessible to people. It'll be more efficient and cost-effective, both for the emergency room costs and for our law enforcement, who can get back to their duties as the team can take over the situation. And we think it'll enable us to respond to crises earlier before they escalate. So initially, the service will be available Monday through Friday during regular business hours, and we hope to get enough funding to expand it and to be able to have it as a routine and ongoing 24/7. So staff have been hired and are in training, and we expect to roll the service out later this summer. We'll do some press releases and have an open house and be sure to let everyone know. So that's a quick overview of the service, and I certainly would be happy to answer any questions if people want to reach out to me with questions at any time.
Thank you, Director Foff. And I'm not sure if I missed it, but did you have a start date for when it would begin?
We don't, we expect it probably early August.
Okay. Thank you very much. And you're right, this is a very innovative, trauma-informed approach, and absolutely, this will be a great benefit to the county. So thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thanks. We appreciate everyone's support.
Thank you so much for coming. And I am newly employed by Hopewell Health, and so have started hearing some of this from the Hopewell side of things. And I think it's really a fantastic service to be able to provide for our community. And are there any questions or comments from members of the committee? Members, if--
Thank you, Member Grace. I just wanted to say how much I love this progress with this program. Having worked as a paramedic in an extremely busy ER up in Columbus for a number of years, the number of patients that I interacted with who were brought in because they had to have a mental health evaluation was kind of staggering. And honestly, how often something that could have been resolved by a program like this would turn into a much, much bigger issue, would escalate rapidly. I don't know if anybody here is familiar with the process of getting, and with like blue slipping and everything, but it's not fun for any person who's taken in for a mental health evaluation. They take all their clothes, all their belongings, they bag it all. It's really, really traumatic for a lot of people to undergo. This is a wonderful bypass to that whole process for many, many people. So thank you so much for working to roll this out and for all your work that you're doing. This is awesome. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from other members of council, administration, or members of the public? Seeing none, thank you again so much. And we look forward to hearing more updates as the program rolls out.
Great, thanks. I appreciate the support.
All right. The next thing on our agenda for the evening is Fire Department Headquarters Structural Repairs. And our Fire Department Chief, Reimer, is here with us this evening. So I'll turn it over to him in just a moment. But the basic information is that the firehouse is in serious need of some repairs. It's a building that was not built to hold the weight that it is currently holding. If anyone goes and looks at pictures of old fire trucks and compares them to the current equipment, there have been significant changes in that equipment and the load that that puts on a building. And so we need to look into what is necessary for repairs, but also, I just want to remind members of council and members of the public that several years ago, I toured the firehouse, and at that time, it was clear that we were in need of a new fire station. And so this is going to be something to hopefully get us through until that can be accomplished. Chief Reimer, would you kind of fill us in on the details of what's happening right now?
Sure. I assume everybody can hear me. I did email you the engineer's report, and I can make that available to those that wish to review it. Recently saw some more movement in the building and called in an engineer to take a look at the building once again, to where we had some structural beams that were rotating and cracking, and more cracks in the floor and movement. Basically, the building was built on stilts, for those who don't know, on the side of a hill back in 1965. And as you mentioned, the trucks are much smaller then. And so now we're looking at trucks that are 20, 30 tons, depending on the size of the truck and which truck we're talking about. So with that being said, the station is not conducive for a fire department anymore, at least not with all the equipment and the trucks and everything that's within that station. So the engineer took a look at it, and they recommended some immediate repairs to it as approximation of $35,000 to $40,000 to stiffen up or make the structure a little bit more stable to get us through the next couple of years. But their end report basically said, you need to get out of there. And we've known that for a while. We've had some major repairs done in 2005 and 2008 to keep it from falling off of the hillside and keep it from falling down, basically. And we've put in since 2005 around $505,000 to keep it standing. This is going to be another approximation of $50,000 to keep it from moving any further. But the request is to make these temporary repairs, at least to get us through what the engineer's report says in the next couple of years. We need to think of something in the meanwhile. And I'd be more happy to give a tour to show exactly what that is entailing. The engineer report does have pictures and recommendations to what that is, and I can rattle off those recommendations if you desire. But we do need to think about getting a new station. I know we've been thinking about that for a while. We understand what the funding is and available. It's just, this is some immediate repairs that'll get us through in the meanwhile until we're able to get something taken care of.
Thank you, Chief Reimer. Yeah, a couple of things in the engineer's report that stood out to me were that the building is being racked out of plum with an observable lean in two directions. And for a building that you're parking very large equipment in, being out of plum in two different directions is certainly not ideal. Also, on a hill in Athens and holding very heavy equipment, it's not surprising that this is happening. And so as the chief said, the engineers made some very specific recommendations on repairs, and that the estimate for making those repairs came in a bit below $50,000, which is, I believe the price point is $50,000 requires council authorization. And there's some concern that it could go over the estimate, and we want to be sure that the proper authorization is in place so that this work can be done in a timely manner. Are there any questions from members of the Service Safety Committee? Any questions from other members of the public?
I'll ask one. This is Micah McCary here.
Yes, go ahead, Member McCary.
I was wondering if we have information about the deadline by which these recommended repairs would need to be made in order to overcome crisis?
I could look at the report. I'm not sure about the deadline. There was a recommendation of a routine inspection to look for, and it does not say how long the routine is. Is it annual, is it biannual? For identifying new cracks, deflections, deformations, other signs of distress in the structure, steel bearings being, steel beams at the walls being enhanced, cantilever beams that they had put in to help strengthen the actual structure. I do not see anything in here, and I would have to look at it again as to how immediate this would need to be done. But again, with the constant movement and the vehicles being pulled out, you can easily stand underneath of the building as a truck is pulling out and see how everything is flexing, the concrete beams are bowing, the steel beams are moving, and the shifting of the station in itself. So I can see if I can find out from the engineer how immediate it needs to be done, but the situation's not going to get any better.
Thank you.
The city has been very progressive, along with the university, and moved forward with doing a study that they paid for some years ago with the Sea Rock facility, adjoining multiple agencies. As of right now, I can speak for the Fire Department. The Fire Department needs a new station as soon as possible. If others want to join forces with this as far as 911, police departments, things of that nature, then so be it. But as of right now, we do need a new station. I know city council, I know the mayor's office, everybody is very aware of this, and they make very great efforts in trying to get us to move forward with this and in the planning stage. We're still moving forward, looking at PPPs and other avenues and bond issues. But as of right now, the repairs, we need to keep the station standing. I've got close to $3,000, $4,000 worth of equipment in that station alone, and if it falls down, that's half the department.
Thanks very much. You're welcome, sir.
Member Reisner.
Does the report mention the possibility of catastrophic failure as opposed to what we're talking about now, which is non-catastrophic failure? You know, there's a big difference between a building starting to lean in two different directions and a total failure where the building is standing one moment and is not the next.
I am not finding, even doing a search for catastrophic, I am not finding those words in that. But it's going to be, I don't know if you know too much about engineers and reports they put out, they're not going to put out something that says, this building's going to last you two years if you put these repairs into it. Nor will they put something in to say, if you don't do this, it's going to fall down in one year and 364 days.
No, but usually in a report like that, there would be something where they would say that the possibility of catastrophic failure is 20%.
I can read you their conclusion, Member Reisner. It says, "It is our opinion that the building is at the end of its service life for the intended occupancy. The original design, coupled with the added load of modern equipment, has created a situation that has allowed the building to move and deflect. The repeated loading from apparatus wheelloads is resulting in the slow degradation of the building's structure. The previous repairs, the repairs that we are recommending and the proposed periodic observations are intended to keep the station operable for a duration of time sufficient to construct a new station. We anticipate that this process will take between two and three years." So it's my understanding from their report that they would not view the building as safe to continue operating in even for two to three years without the current repairs.
Okay, but they're talking about current repairs if you started tomorrow, and the clock is ticking. So if you started fixing it tomorrow, you would have two, maybe three years before that building has to go.
Correct.
It's all you've got. So it's not like, well, if we do the repairs six months from now, the clock will tick. No, the clock is ticking now.
Yes.
So it's one of these situations where we're going to have to, a fish or cut bait is basically it. Either you're going to build a fire station, or we're going to let this one fall down, you know?
And again, the engineer's report says it is not conducive for the purpose it is being used for now. That is not to say it cannot be used for another department, for the public, for some other--
Well, no, if you wanted to use it as a hay barn, you know, something like straw that's nice and light and doesn't weigh 30 tons at a whack, yeah, I'm sure it'd be ideal. But unfortunately, we're not in that business, are we?
Right. It's just not conducive for a fire station anymore.
And you want another fire truck. And I know what's going to happen there. It's going to be another pumper truck with a bigger pump with a bigger capacity, which isn't going to weigh 30 tons, it's going to weigh 35.
I'll talk to him four years from the next one's being due or replaced.
Oh, come on, you'll be asking for one sooner than that.
Member Smedley.
Member Grace, two questions. Did the report indicate that it's unsafe now? Can we continue to use it safely right now? I'm just hearing all this flux and moving, and I'm concerned about it collapsing any day now. Like, how imminent are these?
Are you asking if the engineer has stated that we need to move out of this building until the repairs are made?
Correct.
It-- It does not say anything in there at this point in time. But again, that goes back to how engineers, how they make reports. They're not going to sway one way or another stating that you need to do this right now and move out until the time being. It basically states you need to make these repairs, and these repairs are going to get you through the next two to three years until you're able to get a new station. But they would not give us a definite on, you need to find some other place right now. But the mayor has tasked me with looking for an alternative if for some reason it is condemned. They are very concerned with making sure that we are keeping the fire department safe, we're still keeping the fire department in operation. Where we, and I've been looking, where we would be able to move the station in a temporary time being, basically, I have not been able to find anything. I know we've looked at putting a building out at the training center, but how long is that going to take to construct and be approved by the state in order to move out there in the meanwhile? But it does need to be repaired. I cannot tell you how long repairs are going to be, the engineer will not tell you how long the station is going to last until those repairs are made.
Okay, yes, absolutely. The concern and safety of everybody who works in that building is number one. So and then my follow-up question was, how soon are we, how close are we to an alternative site? But you've already answered that. So thank you, Chief Reimer, appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you very much. If you have any other questions, I will email out that engineer's report to all council members. You can read it for yourself. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me or contact the mayor, and he can direct the questions to me. But I appreciate your support on this issue. I know we have been moving forward, and the mayor's office has been doing a great job as far as make sure we get the C-Rock study taken care of. And I think we do have a plan in place. It's just going to take a lot of support and effort to get that done. Just let me know what we can do to make that happen.
Thank you, chief. Are there any other questions? Yes, Mayor Patterson.
I don't have a question. I kind of want to put this in perspective for our viewing audience, and that is, as it was indicated, you know, this building was built in 1965. Stimson Avenue was built in 1972. Stimson Avenue has lived its useful life and is currently being replaced, and it's time to now do that with the headquarters at some point soon. It does need to be replaced. There's a conversation that Chief Reimer, Service Safety Director Andy Stone and I have had for approximately two years now, a little bit longer than that. So we do need to take care of this. Chief Reimer has explored, as he just indicated, multiple ways in which we can probably hope that we could have potentially offloaded the building with some of the rather large and expensive equipment, not to mention the priceless lives of our 24/7 staffing of the headquarters. You know, to look, can we do some things differently down at Station 2 with the ladder truck? And the answer is no, we can't. It just, due to height, it could never accommodate, not to mention its length. But, you know, I think that we are at a point where we truly need to, and this is a conversation for a different day, but really dig deep into the C-Rock plan, which is the Southeast Ohio Regional Emergency Command or something like that, whatever we had C-Rock stand for.
Operation Center.
Thank you. It's been a long time since I've looked at that. So again, with the need, I think that we have an opportunity as well. So we will have, again, a conversation for a later day as to where we go. But Chief Reimer has turned over every stone trying to figure out how to do this best. And we also, knowing what the estimate was for this work, as the chief indicated to you, it was between, you know, $35,000 to $40,000. We just decided, no, let's take this all the way up to 50,000. That way, we don't have to worry about things like, you know, a change to where it would have to go over. That would have been terrible because then we'd have to go into the world of, and this isn't bad, but, you know, we'd have prevailing wage, we'd have a lot of things to get this right. And so the easiest path, rather than not coming to council and going and hoping that it was going to be $40,000, that let's just anticipate it going higher than that, and that way we're safe. So that's why we're coming to council this evening, to err on the side of process and safety and ask for a $50,000 appropriation to get this done.
Thank you, mayor.
I just have one more question, Micah.
Yeah, go ahead, member McCary.
Mayor Patterson, thanks for that context. I was wondering if you could provide a little additional context, as I'm familiar with Ohio University's significant deferred maintenance issues. And I'm curious about, just from an audience member perspective, or even just mine as a new council member, fire obviously strikes me as an extremely important priority in terms of any place that has deferred maintenance, that having huge implications if not remedied. But are there other high priority deferred maintenance issues of that scale that the council party is familiar with?
I wouldn't say of that scale. That's probably the largest, you know, in the past, I would say the city's swimming pool. But no, nothing of this magnitude. Certainly some expensive, not as expensive items that I think is on council's agenda for this evening, which is replacing the roof of the city building here. And our way of managing deferred maintenance, I think, is a little different than the way Ohio University handles theirs. We, I think we do a pretty good job of keeping these things, not to say OU doesn't, but I'm just, we do a pretty good job of keeping on track of what the lifecycle is for a lot of our bricks and mortar assets, along with our street assets here in the city of Athens.
That's great. Well, thank you very much. Yep.
Thank you. And if there are no other questions or comments, that concludes City and Safety Services for this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Grace. We'll now move on to the Planning and Development Committee, chaired by Councilmember Fall and joined by Councilmembers Grace, Reisner, and Smedley. And tonight, I believe we have a special guest, Zach Rises, who's Vice President for Sunday Creek Horizons, is here to help us with our presentation on remote work. And Zach, the Sunday Creek Horizons is a communications and business development firm that he's affiliated with, and they are working with, yeah, the HAPCAP and the Economic Development Council on this remote work and having in contact with the city. So I'll turn it over to you, Councilmember Fall.
Great, thank you. Zach, could you?
Sure, I'd be happy to. And it's nice to see all of your faces. There's so much to say, but Councilmembers Ziff and McCary, welcome to city council, and I'm really glad to see you both on. For those who don't know me, just 30 seconds of exposition, my name is Zach Rises. As Councilmember Nicely introduced, I work with a company called Sunday Creek Horizons. We are a mission-driven company focusing on a number of fronts, but all of which unified under the mission of advancing Southeast Ohio, the Appalachian Ohio region more broadly. There are numerous ways in which we interact with the city, and what has brought me here today is a proposal that our firm has first introduced to Mayor Patterson and through Mayor Patterson, the members of council. Our proposal focuses on the new economic opportunity that remote work presents. And I do have some slides, they're a little bit boring. Am I able to share my screen, though? I can try, oh, yes, I can, okay. And so if I go over to here, I should be able to hit present. And can I get a verbal confirmation that that is presenting appropriately?
You're good to go.
Okay, great, thank you so much. So my proposal, our company's proposal is this. Using a little bit of background about remote work, I'm actually working remotely right now, and not just working remotely from my laptop, but working remotely from an entirely different municipality. I'm in Salt Lake City right now for this month and really living out exactly what it is that I'd like to talk to you all about today. Our vision is, in partnership with the city, to put together an organization that can become a hub for managing remote work in the city of Athens and on behalf of the city of Athens. This is a proposal that we've had conversations with Mary Nally at the Center for Campus Community Engagement at Ohio University about, as well as with the Athens County Foundation and the ACEDC. And there are really a broad group of partners who are working on various aspects of remote worker attraction and retention, so this is very much a partnership-based initiative. In part, what we'd like to do is create an entity that can unify the various elements of remote work. So for some municipalities that are taking this on, they're providing an incentive package for individuals to come into their municipality. Many municipalities are also creating a worker programming so that people who are working remotely, I'll use our community as an example, if you're working remotely from the city of Athens, but you are from, let's say, Los Angeles, those kinds of programs would introduce you to the community at large. We have great programs that already do things like this. Leadership Athens County, for example, is a really strong example of that kind of locally based programming. So the, I'll zoom through this, and I'm sure we can share these slides among the members of council. There is an identified need for this kind of work, and it's my understanding that Jason Jolly at the Voinovich School is actually undergoing an economic analysis right now, which should be released within the next couple of weeks, about the possibilities that remote work presents from an economic perspective. The, of course, Shining Star example that's relatively regional about remote work is the new Ascend West Virginia program, where former Ohio University professor Danny Twilley actually created, through some prompting from a massive, a large investment opportunity, this program to attract remote workers to a couple of municipalities in West Virginia. I think that from a, I'm going to put this this way, from a community culture perspective, the city of Athens can and should be at the forefront of attracting remote workers to our economy. There are multiple opportunities that are presented to the city in that regard. The opportunity to diversify our economy is first and foremost. But also, really, it's an opportunity for people from outside of this community to come and experience what Athens, the city, and Athens County and Southeast Ohio all have to offer. I think that I heard Steve Patterson say, "Come live, work, and play in Athens," and that's exactly the sort of opportunity that creating a remote work attraction program presents for us. So a little bit of background, my introduction to this idea came in March when Mayor Patterson brought myself and a colleague of mine into the Athens Armory and asked if we had any suggestions or ideas as to how to move that project forward. It's my understanding that the mayor and the city are looking to make an investment in the Armory to return it to being a used community asset as opposed to what it is now, which is a really beautiful building that has so much potential. And one of the aspects of that idea is to create, yes, a flex space as well as some co-working space on the ground floor. And I'm not sure what the prior conversation around this particular idea has been, but I do know that the Armory has been in the forefront of a lot of members of council and members of the community's mind in the past. I think the time is right to make this a reality, the stream a reality. And so, you know, the question became after this meeting, who's going to manage that remote workspace? And this is really where I think this conversation that we're having now sort of originates. There are multiple community partners around the county and around the city, all of whom have a vested interest in seeing this kind of work and effort move forward. But through conversations, again, with a number of stakeholders around the community, none of them feel that they have the capacity to manage a remote work, an actual local remote work entity in the way that is likely necessary in order to make this program and this process work for the city and to keep us competitive as other communities nationwide look to also create remote worker attraction programs, or I should say, many of whom have already done so. So our proposal is that my boss, who many of you know, Congressman Zach Space, along with former State Representative Jack Sarah, who just left the state legislature, and myself, will work together, along with the capacity of Sunday Creek Horizons, to form this entity over a six-month period. And we are asking the city, through Mayor Patterson and through council, for a little bit of a retainer to have this work come together. We've provided a written proposal that, once again, I'm sure can be circulated, and that lays out both end goals and deliverables that will come out of this process. And notably, I think, I hope I'm not jumping the gun, to say that remote worker attraction is actually a COVID response. And so many communities statewide and nationwide are looking at how they can use their own dollars, as well as dollars from the federal government, to respond to COVID by boosting their local economy, replace jobs, and grow jobs. My hope is that I can answer as many questions as council has today, as well as into the future. I think that this is an effort that our staff and our team are very well positioned to undertake. And in particular, one thing that we'll be looking at moving forward here is how we can find additional financial incentives to stabilize this entity and then fund it moving forward. We don't envision this to be a continuous city of Athens funding requirement, but actually something that, once we get off the ground, will be self-sustaining. So there's a huge idea here, and truly, I don't want to, I want to unpack it with all of you and talk through this vision, but I guess I will stop here and take questions. Oh, and because my slides were so boring, I did want to entertain you very briefly with images of the remote workspace that I'm in currently. This is a renovated church in downtown Salt Lake City, and this is the view that I have literally from where I'm sitting. There's my desk, and that's the view out into the church space. So analogous to the Armory, also managed by a nonprofit, I think that the market is there and the time is right, and we'd really love to move forward with this effort. Okay, that was a lot.
Wow. Thank you. I'm going to be the first one who just says a couple words. This, well, it's more than a couple words. The state is not going to be our friend in this situation if their budget goes ahead and doing what they really want to do with the budget, because there's going to be all sorts of roadblocks for this sort of stuff, potentially with the broadband information that they want to put in. So that needs, and the other one, because the state is a roadblock to doing any sort of nice thing development for most of Ohio, they're also looking at all these tax issues surrounding this sort of work and stuff, too. So that's two issues that I know are like percolating through the state legislature, and it's just going to depend on how vindictive and mean they are, or whether they're going to be caught on a good day. So. Do I?
And I'm not, if Chris's, Councilmember Fall may be, there you are, back again.
I am frozen, sorry. Just hopped in there. I hope I had my mouth closed. So somebody else, who was, thank you, Members Smedley.
Thank you, Member Fall, and thank you, Zach, for presenting. Remote work is absolutely an opportunity Remote work is absolutely an opportunity for Athens. I happen to be married to one who's operated his business for many years and has contract workers and all from lovely Athens. So this is definitely an area for growth for Athens. And while the Armory is absolutely, everyone loves the Armory, wants to see it happen, I think maybe our approach could be to scale up to that. We do have an existing remote working space in Uptown Athens that maybe if they're not already partnering with you, we could start there and build up and use existing space that doesn't need as much expensive renovation. And again, scale up to the Armory and obviously that would be our ultimate goal, but I certainly see that as a wonderful opportunity. And we kind of glazed over this real quick and I wanted to circle back to the financial investment the city would be making. It sounded like it was already $35,000 invested into this? Yes, as the, no, the $35,000 would be the proposed financial commitment, is that correct? Okay. And do we have details of what that would be used for exactly?
Yeah, I can absolutely speak to that. So that's plain and simple, used as a retainer to cover staff time at Sunday Creek Horizons to do the work, which is, first of all, legal, legal fees, incorporation of documents, but also stakeholder engagement, pursuing board members for the space document creation, deliverable creation, and if we're pursuing funds from the state, actually engaging with state legislators to see, state legislators and the executive branch to see what pots of money, potentially COVID money, are available for that kind of project development. Yeah.
Also, I, I think that we should remember that if there is pots of COVID money, it's probably better to think big than think small, because they're already trying in Washington DC to bite back a lot of the stuff that might not be already like spent. So that's something that that we can also talk about, because I think that's important.
Thank you, Member Fall and Zach for being here this evening. And I, I just wanted to comment, like, I certainly understand and appreciate Members Medley's thoughts about maybe starting smaller, and I also thought of our, the current small shared working space that we do have uptown. But, boy, the Armory has been a, a project on the back of many people's minds in this community for a long time. We've really wanted to see something, something wonderful, something that benefits the community and makes Athens an even better, stronger place to be. And if there's a possibility that we could get the funding to do something now with that, then, then I think we want to take that opportunity. And so that, that's my input is, you know, I would, I don't want us to, to not think big and miss an opportunity to do something with, with the Armory building.
Great. Zach?
And if I could also, I mean, this is my, I think my place to share only in the context of this conversation, but actually the, the individuals who run Athens Works are looking to phase it out by the end of this year. They've decided that it's no longer a project that any of those leaders have time for and have specifically said to this group, we are, we are working with them, Members Medley, and they have conveyed to us that they're looking for new champions for remote work in Athens and are not only fully in support of this proposal, but have offered their expertise, their data, their backgrounds and their experiences in order to help make this as a successful a project as it, as it can be. And then one thing that it occurs to me, I forgot to mention, is that in addition to the partners who have come together to discuss what it would look like to put together a remote work effort for Athens, there is a 10, a parallel track effort that is occurring in Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia. So this is really something that's occurring in tandem with outdoor recreation growth and development around the region. This creates, if that's the play, then this is the work. And we might need, you know, we're, and I know that there are lots of minds focused on the live. So if we look at those three tracks, this would allow, this would create the ecosystem that would allow for some of those folks to be here and to work here. And I'd only just thought of those three things now, so I'd like that parallel.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to point out that this would have tangential benefits because those spaces would be available for other organizations to use, and that's something, you know, the mayor and I have been talking about is, is being able to cross, cross-use a lot of those areas, because, you know, there are distinctive times that they can be used in distinctive ways. Mayor, do you have something to add?
I, I do. I always do, right? You know, when, when we learned of the ARPA money that is coming, we just don't know when, and knowing what it's, what the money can be used for, and, and that's when I really started thinking about cowork, share workspace on the lower level of the Armory, because it is ADA accessible to put a door through, which we've already been given approval from History Connection, you know, Paul's work, the city planner. We have seen that designed where there can be an access that comes in off of Armory Avenue into that, that lower level. And I feel strongly that this is one way to really start getting the building usable, because as we're all aware, I mean, it's been in mothballs for, for decades now. And so I see an opportunity, again, granted council's approval of the use of some of the ARPA money to be able to do this, and to kind of complement what Zach Rises was saying. I too have had brief conversations with Athens Works and, and, you know, had heard the same thing, that we're kind of thinking of, of completely moving in a different direction from what was Athens Works and sort of the scalability size, I appreciate that, but know that they were at the table to have that conversation. And so I see even more need at this point in time to have a space that, that can be a cowork, share workspace. And to Councilmember Fall, your opening comment, which I totally appreciate, because nothing makes me, makes me shudder more than HB 110, where they slid in at the last minute language speaking to municipalities not having broadband, but in looking at it really carefully, it speaks to having broadband that you are offering at wholesale or retail pricing. We have an opportunity to run fiber up to the Armory and just have it to where it's got high-speed broadband, period. So, you know, I, I, I mean, again, that's a whole different topic when it comes to fiberizing our conduit, but I, I think there's a path moving forward. But I think that's important for the citizens to understand what you said at the onset, and that is preemption erosion of home rule coming at us again.
Great. Sam?
Zach, I think you know that there are so many of us in this community that want to save the Armory and have it, have a useful purpose. I've received a lot of emails as a city council person, but very few letters, but I did receive soon after joining council, a handwritten letter from a prominent local citizen who number one agenda item was save the Armory and don't let, don't let the Armory be torn down or otherwise turned over to some other opportunity. So I think it's, it's great when we are innovative and we think about is to, to, to use monies, et cetera. But I am, I do want to understand completely, one of your slides, as mentioned previously, did say $35,000, I believe, funded by the Athens Foundation and the city of Athens. Is that split up? Can you give me a little more detail on what you're talking about there?
Yes, that's a great, a great question. Thank you, Member Crowell. So that, that speaks to the number of entities who we've engaged to fund this. If I could be very transparent with council, and because this is a public meeting, with anybody who chooses to watch it now or in the future, our, our initial proposal did approach the Athens County and Athens City to jointly fund a remote work in Athens County effort with the vision of growing it regionally, making this an Appalachia remote worker attraction program with the following as our base principles. West Virginia got very lucky to have a private funder who wanted to invest 25 million in remote worker attraction for the state. If the same thing were to occur in, in the state of Ohio, it's unlikely that that, that individual would choose to focus on Appalachia. More than likely, anyone who has $25 million to put into that sort of effort is going to be in one of the more populated regions of the state of Ohio. And thus, if we want to attract remote workers to Appalachia and reverse the brain drain that has, has been so damaging to so many of our communities, it's got to be a local, a locally rooted, locally originated effort. So that, that was our initial vision. Now, the, the vision has actually, to Councilmember Medley's point, has actually reduced in scope somewhat significantly out of, you know, really the, the very, very responsible understanding that elected officials have responsibility to the communities in which they're elected. So for the city and the county, if both entities were to choose to invest in this, that would be a county level priority with maybe the city as a hub. Certainly, you know, those, the city and county of Athens couldn't choose to fund a regional effort on their own, absolutely. With the, the council or the Athens County has, for the time being, decided that this isn't a priority spending of dollars. And so the focus has narrowed even more in scope to can we, can we focus on building an effort that will attract workers to the city of Athens with an understanding, once again, that as that sort of program gains steam, there's certainly room for growth. There's lots of beautiful country, lots of beautiful towns, lots of opportunities across the region that folks from all over the West Coast, the East Coast, other major metropolitan areas might choose to take advantage of, and we should and want to be ready to receive them. My vision, just so that to, to ease the burden on the city to manage this process, would be for the city to sub-grant dollars to the Athens County Foundation and to have our team report directly to them. That, that is purely a process-oriented vision, you know, I, I think we are open to whatever makes the most sense on council's behalf, but certainly I would want to report to an entity that had a vested interest, that had the legitimacy and that could, you know, we could directly work with to, to make that sort of, as we, as we built this ship. And so that, that is where that came from. I think, Member Crowell, that there is an opportunity to find other funders, but for the time being, I, we're really at a point where the snowball will grow, grow as it rolls down the hill, but somebody's got to push the snowball. And that, that's the conversation that I've been having for a couple of months now and has brought us to where we are right now.
Okay, thank you for explaining.
Absolutely.
Great. Also, I'd like to point out, this is not much different than hiring certain types of contractors when we do planning, like some of our plans that we've produced or the pool process. So this is not that unusual, because, you know, we, we all have public and public process that, that much of this would go through. So other questions?
This is Micah McCary again, just wondering if there are any compelling statistics about, you know, how many people are working remotely who are going to be excited to have something like this? Anything like that that we know?
Yeah, that's a great, great question, Member McCary. So there are, there are two places that I can point you, because I don't have those data figures right in front of me, but the remote worker attraction programs that have been created in Maine, West Virginia and Kansas have all seen, what's the word I'm looking for, applications that are 10 times higher than the spaces that those programs have had the ability to accept. And, and so there are a couple of really neat op-eds from the New York Times specifically about that complexity. There's also a specific report that is coming out from the Voinovich School that my understanding is, thank you, Mayor Patterson, is specifically looking at the opportunity for this region that I don't have a specific date for, but I think will be the, maybe can provide more of that background and locally rooted data that you're asking for. And then the, the, well, actually, no, I'll, I'll stop there.
Okay, great. Any, Mayor? Thank you.
Just to add a little bit more detail to that, you know, Molly Fitzgerald at the Athens County Economic Development Council, along with Mr. Ben Lockman, you know, have a survey that they have put out, continue to put out, which is going to help inform the white paper that will likely be coming out of the Voinovich School soon with Dr. Jason Jolly, who's kind of spearheading that. So there's, there's a lot of moving pieces here, and what I really feel strongly about is there is no real umbrella bringing all this together. I feel like there's these parallel tracks and they're all doing very similar, I shouldn't even say similar, the, the objective is the same. And at some point, and this is what intrigued me, what, what Zach has brought before council is, it finally gives a, an umbrella organization to kind of pull all this in, because we're going to start having some good, solid data coming into us. You know, even a, a meeting that was had probably a month ago now with Dr. Danny Twilley, a lot of you know Danny, he's kind of at the fore with what is going on in, over in West Virginia. And he, what he informed us is that we do need to have a lot of data, and we've been pretty rapid in getting that information, getting survey information. How many people are remote working? How many people plan to continue remote working in the future, you know? Did you start because of the pandemic? We already know there's a number of people, and Councilmember Medley, you just mentioned it, that, you know, there's people who, pre-pandemic, that were remote workers. But I think what corporations and companies have seen clearly is that they don't have to have office spaces for people, they can effectively work from just about anywhere, i.e. where Zach, where Zach Rises is right now. You can, so, so I, there will be soon coming more information for council, and as soon as I get it, I will certainly share it with you through the survey and through the white paper that Dr. Jolly is going to be putting together.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Great. Any other questions? Cool. What, what type of timeline do you see this occurring in?
Is this, is that a question for me?
Well, either, the mayor or you.
I'll, I'll speak first and then, Mayor, please. The, that, I used the word with somebody a couple months ago, I said, the vibes are right for this. And what I meant by that is the opportunity is now, and I really, you know, understand these, these are big decisions and important decisions and deliberation is necessary. I, I would like to begin building the ship as soon as possible. I am very excited about it. Case in point, if I wanted to do the reverse of what I'm doing now, if I wanted to live here, but then go work in a hip, cool location, I would be struggling to find the alternative or the, the counterpart to where I am now in Athens, and I'd love to provide that to other people, all sorts of market sectors, people who went to Ohio University and moved away, individuals who are retiring. I should mention all of the age-friendly Athens County work that's going on right now. This, this really is, is a great track for that too. And so my personal statement is, as, as soon as we can begin moving, I'm ready to work on it, my team's ready to work on it, we're extremely excited about this opportunity, and I'm happy to talk to anybody, you know, about it at any point.
And what is the, Mayor, what are you looking for from this? Because it is under, it is $35,000, so. Because it is under, it is $35,000, so.
I certainly wanted council to be aware, you know, and really have council understand everything that Zach has provided to me. I also informed Zach that, you know, if council moves us forward, first reading next Friday, Monday, next Friday, next Monday. But then I also told Zach that council goes on recess. I don't have any intention, I don't think that we should suspend or anything like that with this. We'll go through and council will continue the second and third reading in August when you return from recess. Zach indicated that that was, he understood and that that's fine. Also, you know, and, you know, Zach is aware, because he's toured through the building with me, that, you know, it's not like we're going to be able to have this operational building by September or not, you know. So we've got a lot of work that we've got to do, given council's blessing on the Armory. So there's, and Zach recognizes that as well, so.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, any questions from the audience? Okay, cool. Yes, it would be nice to see the Armory doing something, seeing how, that was something I worked on when I was on Planning Commission. A long time ago. So, great, thank you, Zach, for coming in.
Thanks so much.
Great, thank you. Next on our agenda item is parking, off-site parking. Update of our Chapter 23.08, off-street parking, unloading, and loading. Let me describe first why we're looking at those specifically and then the process. As we know, we went through this comprehensive plan process. And we've had, we had hundreds of hours of working with people, of public meetings, of stakeholder meetings, of surveys, a lot of really great outreach. And that was a real feature. We wanted to go past the usual voices and go out into people and really get a deep dive in our community. And the resulting comprehensive plan that council adopted last year has a lot of various proposals that are going to be start codifying, basically. And this is the street parking proposals that were brought up from the comprehensive plan and from a lot of other planning processes that the city has done. So, I feel like I have a echo. Okay. As we all know, parking just is a major factor in our communities. You know, you plan around it, but it's not only a factor of what communities look like or how they deal with parking lots. You know, you have communities that have empty downtown parking lots at night and you don't want to go walking through those areas at all. And then there's others that don't, and it looks like it's really well managed and planned. It not only does impact like those sort of land uses and impacts on cost of development, you also get a lot of other social costs. And as we know, going through COVID, these have been even made into sharper focus for many in our community. And it's, the parking requirements that we have in place are really quite ancient. They don't follow best management practices. And so we want, as the administration and city council, to go through this process to be able to update the parking. And Paul's here tonight. I work closely with Paul and David Riggs and Lisa to get these to be what the comprehensive plan talked about and what the administration thinks will work and the trends and the data that we've been seeing over the past year. Parking is also one of the things that we have a carrot. Right now, it's kind of a stick and it's kind of a stick that we beat over people's head. We want a carrot. We want people to be able to develop nice places for people to live, nice places for people to recreate and work. And we could do that with the carrot that we have with parking. We don't have like density bonuses like some communities have or any of those other normal planning things. We have parking. So looking at those two things, we went and worked on this. There's, what happens when you have old, out-of-date parking ordinances and code is that you get a mismatch in the type of parking that you need and what is actually on the ground. Because you usually have requirements to have too much parking of one type and not enough parking of another type, or they don't overlap in a good time schedule. And so you have a mismatch of parking with what the real parking needs to be used. So that's one of the things. So you can do things to help reduce that. So we looked at three different things. You can change sizes of parking spaces, that helps reduce impacts. You can change dimensions required for different parts of the parking area. You can change the number of parking spaces that are required. And you can change the number that are allowed, the number of parking spaces allowed. So with that in mind, I want to read a couple of the comprehensive plan quotes. "Zoning changes are needed to help shift development focus from cars to people. This can be accomplished by converting parking minimum requirements to parking maximums while reducing the maximum allowable space permitted. Within neighborhoods, B1-type zoning should be strategically placed to allow for walkable restaurant retail locations close to where people live." So that's something that city has been doing a lot of over the years. It's not like we're new at making our community more people friendly and more focused on walkability and bikeability. We did our estate complete streets program. We have a complete streets policy now. And so this isn't that much of a change from all the other things that we have been going towards with sustainability and stuff. We also have a pedestrian and bicycle plan that supports this and a sustainability plan that supports this. So basically, if you go through the changes that we've, are suggesting, let me first say what this process is like, because this isn't like a three-reading process. Because it's in the zoning code and the Planning Commission has a role to play in adopting anything that's changed the zoning code. And what happens in this process is that we do a one-reading resolution about the subject. We send over the recommendations that we've put together as this resolution. And they will spend their time discussing it, hearing people and looking at all the issues of it. They will make a recommendation. It comes back to planning, from Planning Commission to the Planning and Development Committee, mine. And then it goes through a normal three-reading process plus a public hearing. So this is just the start of basically two and a half months of discussing this sort of issue. However, we have already been discussing it as a community because of affordable housing issues that came up recently with people's desires to help maybe those community members that don't want to rent anymore of converting those outer houses into something that they may be able to use and such. So those sort of issues have already been brought up. They were brought up over and over and over in the comprehensive plan. Read the plan, it comes out over and over. I think that at this point, many communities have gone and basically looked at the zoning requirements and saying that how they're written now makes them on the face very exclusionary. And when the, in the comprehensive plan process, we, the city analyzed what can be made, where it can be built, is that basically the only thing that is feasible with like infill and those sort of things is single-family homes on large lots. That's totally skewed from people who need to maybe age in place in their house or who maybe lives in one of the smaller lots who can't put in 15, you know, 100 feet of parking in those areas but may still need to rent their house as like a room. And as COVID and the social justice process that we as a city are going through, we need to recognize that traditional R1 zoning, R2 zoning, and R3 zoning tends to be very exclusionary. Minnesota, Minneapolis, Minnesota, they removed their zoning and made everything mixed use. Buffalo, they developed a whole inclusionary zoning. So it's saying what you can do instead of what you can't. And so a lot of cities offer a lot of different models of how we can go forward to make sure that we fulfill the comprehensive plan's goals of what people want of living in a, you know, funky community that is vibrant, has art, and has a multitude of different types of housing so that everybody's included in our community. And so that's one of the philosophies that the city, the administration, Paul, and I worked under when we went through this process. So, basically, some of the, some of the changes, one of the biggest changes is when it comes to using a joint-use parking lot, this city allows like churches to do it. There are other parking lots that could be shared use. And so a lot of communities are going towards a shared use space, which means that offices, doctor's office, they have 15 spaces. You are a restaurant that's open at night and you need 15 spaces. You can figure out and make a legally binding agreement through a lease or a D restriction that you can share that parking. And that helps reduce the amount of parking that is located up, that empty lot syndrome. And it makes a lot more sense when it comes to being able to afford development, to be able to go forward and make that restaurant. Because providing parking is a hindrance because it's so expensive. The next area is the table, which, when you go and on the drive, the Table B. Table B is the meat of the parking ordinance. That has been now updated with the best management practices for how much parking should be required. Because of trend lines and what we have seen in the city and the types of housing that we have demand for but we don't have, we're really seeing a change towards people reducing the amount of parking that they require. Especially in a city that provides really good transit, great bicycling and walking abilities. We are a walkable city and we should have walkable parking. So those are presented as a minimum requirement for those different uses. And then there is a maximum allowed on those various lots of either 5% or 10%. I don't remember which one we decided at the end of our meeting this morning. So that's in. So that means that developers have a much more, it's much more flexible to be able to do those sort of projects. So they can have more flexibility and better tools to be able to make the right size parking, parking lots, sort of thing. Now, there are certain ways, and this is our carrot. We have a nice carrot, very organic, sustainably grown, locally. There's ways that you can get exemptions to the parking requirement. One of them is for a transit-oriented district. And basically, that is if you are in a buffer area of 1,500 feet from a transit service that is in Athens, that you will be able to reduce the amount of parking for projects that go in those areas. Our park, our transit is mature. It's awesome, you know, it's only getting better. And we should take, we should take advantage of it as a keystone for our development and making it because that's more sustainable, it's more resilient. Now, for places that aren't in those transit areas, there are certain types of projects that we've said that you can get up to a 75% reduction because these are the sort of projects that we want. And they have to do with people who have low-income tax credit projects, because we want those type of projects. You can put parking for bicycles in if you want to provide more for bicycles and reduce the parking for cars that way. Designated downtown redevelopment zones, special improvement districts, opportunity zones, innovation zones, those sort of areas because they already go through several plans, several processes of plans, and most of them are paid by council. Those are the sort of things because they're mixed use and they're going to be much more sustainable and be able to have more affordable development and housing development. And so you can see the other ones, very much like what we talked about with the tax increment financing up in the university estates. So, in a nutshell, that's it. Paul, want I say anything?
Well, thank you, Chris. Good evening, everybody. Briefly, I know there's two new members on here that I don't believe I've formally met. I think, Ben, I may have met you once or twice at Donkey. And Micah, congratulations on your new appointment as well. I'm Paul Logan, the planner for the city. I've been with the city for about 13 years now. And I can say that honestly, every, pretty much every day, my day ends with conversation about parking. Which is not why I got into planning. That being said, parking runs counter to a lot of the things that we're trying to do in this city to make it a better place to live, to make it a walkable community, a bikeable community, a community that's friendly for people with disabilities and a community that has public transportation. Our parking requirements, in a nutshell, are assuming that all of us at all times are driving to every destination, assuming that all of our purchases for every commodity that we buy are bought at stores in our community, that we're never buying things online, that we're never taking our bike anywhere, we're never walking somewhere, and we're never taking the bus. We know that all those things aren't true. But our parking requirements are saying, this is how you want your community to be so that everybody has a place to park their car. And so because of that, we get the city that we get. And if, believe it or not, and you can map this yourself, but you can walk through parking lots, starting at the western, excuse me, the eastern edge of Lowe's parking lot. You can walk all the way through parking lots, the entire way to the front door of the community center. You've walked almost a mile, about 5,100 feet. Of that 5,100 feet, only 25 feet of it is on landscaped earth. Everything else is tarmac, just straight parking lot. Never went on the sidewalk, never went on the road. That's the city we built and that's the city that we're getting. And so when we talk about why we need parking reform, it's because we're saying, we want the city that's in town, we want uptown, we want viable neighborhoods, and we want to encourage a city where people have other opportunities besides driving their cars somewhere. Cars are really expensive, they're private property. My car is my property, I made the decision to purchase it. Got a broken-down one in my driveway, if anybody's interested in buying one for the record. And again, to what Chris said, to what council member Paul said, right now, this is a resolution to try to move forward so that we can continue to have discussions with the Planning Commission and then ultimately to bring potential for recommendations back to city council. And that's it. It's been a very long day for me. I feel like I say that every time I'm on city council. For a reason, I'm always at council the same evening that we have the Historic Preservation Commission. So I've been sitting on city Zoom since 5 o'clock tonight.
Great. Thank you, Paul. Mayor, do you want to say anything?
Along with? No, I think everything from the city planner and from you, Member Fall, I think pretty much encapsulates everything. I certainly, as you should, encourage City Council to read carefully through the edits that Chris Fall has, Councilmember Fall has put before you. I have read through it. I have a couple of housekeeping things that I can share with you this week. But, you know, I I don't disagree with what both of you have said. I mean, it's time for all of us to rethink parking requirements citywide. It is old, it is antiquated, it's clunky, and it also, I I believe, you know, disadvantages the property owners that have those properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Member Grace?
Thank you, Member Fall. And I I have certainly been one of those people who has had many conversations with Planner Paul about parking. And frequently, any, any project, any conversation we're having about housing, about development, there are always, always questions about parking. And I really appreciate all the work from Member Fall and and Paul on this. And it really is time. And I liked what what Paul said about our, we, we plan for the city that we've got. And we, we want to shift the focus away from expecting and planning for everyone to always be in a car. Not that we won't still be accommodating or adequate space for cars, for people to get to businesses and park, but we don't need as much of our focus to be around accommodating cars. And and I think if if we are focused more on planning towards alternate forms of transportation, then we will see a shift that direction. And I think it is definitely already happening. And and we want to move forward towards alternate forms of transportation, whether it's feet or bicycles or scooters. There, there are many ways to get around Athens without a car. And so I want to encourage that. And again, thank you for all the work on this, Member Fall and Planner. It is much appreciated.
Thank you. Mr. Ziff?
Thank you. Thank you, Member Fall. I had just a couple of questions. One was for Section 23.08.01, Section D. And it's referring specifically to the radius of where a parking space could be placed for, like to meet a requirement of a building having a parking space. It was changing it from 250 to 1,000 feet, which is a little shy of a quarter mile. Does that, I just want to make sure I'm reading it correctly. Does that mean that, like, say, someone rented a house and they were told that they had parking, could the landlord of that property then tell them, oh, yes, you have parking, but your parking spot for your car is about a quarter mile away? Is that what they would be able to do?
Well, what what this is really looking at, and it's called walkable parking. And it's basically what you look at is you have a five to 10 minute walk. And so a lot of people, you know, we're going, people come here, students come here without cars for their first two years. The university builds dorms that have no parking, and they seem to be able to deal with it. And so it's the same sort of thing here. And that will help you get away from the tremendous amounts of shop fronts that are only parking, that aren't pedestrian friendly and those sort of things. It also helps us to be more flexible for like those shared agreements, like a church would do with the with another group. And it was like 500 feet for the church. So this helps them get more, possibly easier to find those sort of parking spots, too.
Okay, that makes sense. I still have a slight concern, just based on that not all of the renters in Athens are students. I know I personally would not like it if my car had to be parked a quarter mile away from my residence. That, for me, would be very inconvenient, just needing my car on a somewhat regular basis for work, whatever else I'm doing.
And that will be what you look for, for your housing. But people are coming in and we're talking, we talked about the whole project with Zach and remote workers and such. The, the trend lines are showing that more and more people don't necessarily need their car parked right there, or they don't mind having a walk sort of of things. And also, what happens when the cost of parking gets decoupled from the cost of renting, rents should go down. Because everybody who has a car is being subsidized by a lot of people who don't, because they're still kind of paying for those, those cars in that, in that development. And so that is something, it's the free rider. And, and that's why it's has a hard time not being exclusionary and those sort of things.
All right. I also, I had another question as well. It was for Section 23 dash 08 dash 06. It was Section 1A. And it was saying that, I think you mentioned it as well already, that spots like parking spaces could be reduced to zero if they're within 1,500 feet of a public transit location. Would that mean, just like within 1,500 feet of a stop, or just being along the route?
Well, they're districts. So it would be, it's a linear, it's a, it's a, like a linear overlay is basically what we're looking at. So.
And then the last one I had was, it said, and you also mentioned this as well, how convenient. With the low income tax credits could have spots reduced by 75%, would that mean that, and this is just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, would that mean that if someone had a low income tax credit, could they normally, if it wasn't that, they would be able to have two parking spots? Could a landlord then say that, no, you have one parking space? Is that what that would mean?
It, it would allow the developer in the city to have more flexibility to identify the right amount of parking that that projects like that will need. Right now, it's a set, if you go up to this, it may be that you're dealing with seniors and they only have 1.2 cars per four people. But our, right now, our regulations are so inflexible that you didn't necessarily, the only real reason, the only real way that you can be super flexible right now is using our PUD, Planned Unit Development, which the last one we used was years and years ago because it's not a very useful tool. And so this gives us the ability to work with the developers, like what we did with the TIF. A lot of these things, we kind of did with the TIF. WODA, that's doing all that, maybe they could have, if this process had gone forward in a different time zone, this could potentially allow for them to maybe make four more units. You know, it allows that flexibility.
Gotcha. So would this be mainly focused more on like newly built stuff, or would this be allowing residences that currently exist to then have the parking stuff diminished, or?
Yes.
Okay.
So there is, there is, it's a recommendation, it's a recognition that there are places that housing that has way too much cement in the backyard. And so if you, for example, took one of those houses and maybe, maybe into a duplex, owner occupied duplex, and you could take some of that parking out to use, for example, garden, you know, that would be, yes, that is what the best management practices suggest.
All right. Thank you.
Arian?
Thank you, Member Fall. I wanted to echo some of Sarah, Member Grace's comments. Appreciate the philosophy and the idea behind it, and I appreciate the work behind it. I certainly want to also echo Members Ziff's concerns. How can we balance out what we're trying to do and and protect some of the folks who still need that parking spot? Imagine having a baby and having to lug them that distance, or groceries and having to lug them that distance. And just recognizing that, yes, there are better ways to utilize and plan our cities, but also recognizing our current society and the structure that we have in place, and just allowing that gradual shift or grandfathering in some locations. I think Ben even spoke to that some, like, is this for new development, or is this for current existing?
Well, it's, it's for, because it's in the zoning code, it's for offsite, you know, off street parking. I think that when you couple this with the new parking permit that we went from a model now to more fully implemented, that would be able to also, you know, that is, is another way of making, answering some of your concerns, you know, about those issues of being. But what what happens in a lot of these areas is that they find that in transit oriented areas, the car, car ownership goes down in those areas. And the ability to be able to walk increases because you have better safety and those sort of things, because you don't have a mile long parking lot. Because we know how we all drive in parking lots. So this also impacts commercial parking lots. You know, if they have, from the landscaping ordinance, if they have a big old wap and tree right there, they don't need to cut it down and put that parking spot. Right now, maybe, but landscape says that you can do up to like a couple places if a house has a big old tree. But maybe there's some really amazing trees and it's maybe more than four spaces, they would have to cut them down.
Yeah, absolutely. I just wanted to finish my thought. I'm not, certainly not suggesting changes aren't necessary and needed. Absolutely. It's, we need to update it and review it. But recognizing what unintended consequences we're creating for people who already live in our city and want to stay in it, and and make sure their quality of life remains what they want it to be. And so anyway, just finding that balance. And I'm very happy that we're not expected to approve this tonight. As the mayor mentioned, it is an important one that we really read closely. So thank you for your work.
Any other questions? Sarah?
I, I think one thing that, yes, this, this is going to be a multi-step, long process that will go through, through multiple groups' review. But also, if we do end up approving these changes, that doesn't automatically mean that a landlord who, who has a house and a driveway with two parking spots, they're not going to go out and be required to eliminate those parking spots that that are currently provided at a home. That we're not going to be putting something in place that requires removal of existing spaces. So if there is demand by the residents of a particular home or by renters for parking spaces that are currently in existence, then I believe they will stay. If, you know, so someone who who rents a home and they, they want to have the parking spaces that are there, then they, I believe they will remain there. I, am I understanding this correctly, Paul, like, and and Chris? It's not going to put in place a requirement that people remove or reduce existing spaces. It's just, they will have the option to, without it violating our current planning. And so it really allows the demand for parking to much more closely drive the supply of parking spaces. So if, if people who own apartment buildings or individual homes have renters reaching out to them wanting parking spaces, they will keep those spaces. If however, they are seeing a declining interest in, in those spaces, and more and more tenants are saying, boy, I, I wish I didn't have to pay this extra to have a parking space, then they might convert those unused parking spaces to other uses. So I just, it, it offers a much more demand-driven situation rather than the city mandating that they provide a higher number of spaces. And so I, I think that, that businesses, whether landlords or retail businesses, will have a very vested interest in providing the spaces needed to meet the demand for the spaces. And so I, I think this will lead to a better balance. And because it will allow for things to shift more easily over time to match the changes in demand. If, if we have a big increase in, in remote workers to come and, and then want to ride their motorized bicycles up to the armory to work, then, then there, there may be a decrease in number of parking spaces needed at rental places. So I just, I appreciate the flexibility that these changes would allow for future, future changes in our landscape.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Great. Questions from the audience? I can't see anybody. So Chris has to do that part.
We're not, we're not seeing anybody right now. So.
So as I said, this is a resolution. It will be a one reading resolution that will come up next week. And then it will be kicked over to the Planning Commission. They're on streaming video, too, so you can watch their meetings. And they also have public opportunity for always, always public opportunity when these, whatever they're called, cases come up and/or recommendations. So I encourage people to do that if they miss things during July, you know. So, okay. Is that it? Thank you. Next thing is DORA, which we talked about earlier. This is being put on the agenda right now. We have to codify what is happening in the DORA into our code. So basically, it's, you can't drink with one of those cups when you're in a car. It doesn't allow any open containers in cars or anything. And the other one is that you can't just go waltzing in any place with your cup. Is that, I understand the first warehouses. So is that right, Mayor? Or Chris? So, so it just codifies everything. That will be read for the first time next week, and I expect that we will probably be shooting it through all three readings because we're leaving for July. Is that, because we want to do this. Lisa?
Okay. Well, we have open container law, and that prohibits open containers in public spaces. So we have to amend that to recognize that with the DORA, you would be allowed to have an open container in a public space. So we're really codifying the DORA and making an exception for the DORA in our open container law, the prohibition. So that's what we're doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. And this is, this will be moved with suspension, I expect, Monday. We'll see Monday whether we need to or not. Thank you. That ends my committee. Thanks, Councilmember Fall. We'll move on now to Finance and Personnel Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Crowell and joined by Councilmembers Reisner and Snedley.
Thank you, President Reisner. A few items on our agenda tonight, starting with appropriations. We will propose amending a current appropriation ordinance, 0821, for these items. Instead of, instead of starting a new appropriation ordinance, we will propose later today during our regular meeting to amend current appropriation ordinance. For these two items, one is water meter reading equipment. One of the EPW water handheld meter readers needs to be replaced. Director Adine realized that two funding lines that might have appropriations in them for this equipment were not funded in last year's budget. So what we are proposing is that we refund two separate lines with the cost of one of these meter readers. They are approximately $3,000. They are approximately $3,000. So the idea is to appropriate $6,000, $3,000 in two different lines to cover this needed new meter reader, as well as the possibility that another meter reader is needed later in the year. So that first item is $6,000 for two different lines for handheld meter readers. Any questions about this item for EPW? None from the committee? Other council members? City administration? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. And I would like the city administration to provide a little bit of information on this one. There is a need in the utilities billing office for additional and new furniture. They're doing some renovating in that office, and as they, I believe, removed some of the furniture for painting, much of it fell apart. It is between 15 and 20 years old. And so there is a request for furniture for the utilities billing department. The money for this furniture would come from three separate fund lines, water, sewer, and garbage to replace this furniture. This is not only sort of desks, but a lot of cabinetry that holds a lot of documents, et cetera. My question is, the amount that has been requested is $12,000, split between those three funding lines. $5,000 from water, $5,000 from sewer, and $2,000 from garbage. And the initial estimate that I had seen was less than that, and I didn't know if anything had changed in the request. I don't know if the city administration has any further info. Mayor?
No, I don't think that it has changed, but it's just a safeguard in case we do find that there, it does, it is more expensive to get the furniture that they are interested in to have there. I should point out that that particular office, which houses two individuals, has not had any level of upgrade since the early 90s. It's been a long time. It has been repainted. It has new flooring in there. It had old failing carpet in that space. And it has been upgraded with LED lighting, like a lot of the offices on the first floor of the city building have, which is a cost-saving measure. But Councilmember Crowell, to your point, literally, when the furniture was being moved out to replace the flooring, flooring to paint the office and whatnot, the furniture, it fell apart. It literally broke apart. The desktop to which, tops, plural, that Tina and Kim have been working off of, the veneer surface has come off of it completely where their keyboards are, and it was not uncommon for, it is uncommon to hear, but for them, it was a regular occurrence to have a splinter in their hands as they're doing work, which poses OSHA issues, right? So therefore, I think it's important for them. Plus, it's the space that they spend, you know, eight to nine hours a day. And they currently are both using the same chairs as were originally put into that office when that became the utility billing office. So I think the addition, Member Crowell, is just to make sure that we have enough to cover all the expenses to replace everything in their spaces.
Thank you, Mayor, for that additional information. Committee, any questions? Yes, Auditor Heck, please.
I just want to clarify, and I might not have the latest version, draft version of this ordinance, but the one I have has $2,000 out of three funds, each of three funds for furniture.
That's correct.
Okay. And so it's $5,000 out of water, $5,000 out of sewer, but that's the $2,000 for furniture and $3,000 for the handheld meter reader. Is that right still?
Yes.
Okay, and then $2,000 out of garbage. Okay, thanks, Debbie. So the amendments that are in your paperwork, I guess, are okay.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Auditor. The way I read this had the $5,000 separate from the $2,000, but it's two, so it is $6,000 total for the furniture, which was the original amount that I had heard in utilities billing. I appreciate that clarification. Any other questions from committee or other council members? Okay, thank you. Moving on, the next item on our agenda is the 2022 rate increases. We have no information for council or the committee or council or the public tonight. We will be looking at that in August. I just want the public and council to know that the city administration is doing their due diligence to look at possible rate increases across departments in the middle of 2021 and still later in the year, and so we have plenty of time to discuss. And the deputy service safety director is preparing that information, and we'll be looking at that in August. So unless there's any added information there, we'll skip to the next item, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, an update on this. And I don't have any information, but if the auditor, the mayor, has any updated information on the American Rescue Plan Act, I'm happy to turn this over to them. Mayor Patterson?
The only thing to share as an update is we haven't received any American Rescue Plan dollars as of yet. I guess maybe the only update I could provide is if that comes in, you know, after council goes on recess, we will have to, you know, deposit that funding. Auditor Heck, I believe we're going to be putting that into the CARES Act line that we had from 2020. But if it comes in before, we'll certainly alert city council that we did receive it. But we have no intel as to whether we're getting, when we're getting it, nor the amount.
Auditor?
Actually, Mayor, we are required to create a new fund. That was our plan, to save another, yet another fund in our reports. But we are required, I think it's 293 or something, I don't know, 593, 293, I don't know. Anyway, so, yes, I kind of forgot we were going to put this on here. But the main thing is that we can't spend any of that until council appropriates it. So once it comes in, we'll deposit it, we'll estimate the revenue into the correct fund, and then it will have to wait until council comes back and appropriates money for us to spend. That's it, sorry.
Thank you. Member Snedley?
Thank you, Member Crowell. Is there any urgency in spending that? Do we have a deadline? No, okay. I was, we all know recess, but I was going to say if it required us to come back to help you move that, we would do that. Okay. That's it, thank you.
No, there is no urgency. I think council may know this. I mean, we're going to be receiving the American Rescue Plan money in two different tranches. We'll receive one, like I said, sometime this summer. We'll receive the second one, as I've been told, at basically that same date in 2022. And the city has up to four years in which to use the money, as we're eligible to for COVID-19-related expenses.
Auditor?
I just wanted to add that, yeah, our requirements or the uses of these funds are slightly different than our CARES Act funds from last year. So, yeah, and I don't know, I don't know about the mayor, we've talked about this, but we're not getting a lot of specific information on that just yet. Signed up for a webinar, excuse me, next week, hoping to get additional information, or more specifics for what we can use it for. So I'd say we're probably not going to take action until council comes back. However, by then, the mayor might, you know, we might have figured it out and have some ideas and be ready to go by then, but that's where I think we are now, anyway.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you, President Reisner. That concludes Finance and Personnel.
Thanks, Councilmember Crowell. We'll move on now to our special session, and this is where we'll read some ordinances, amend one, pass one. And tonight is different than a regular business session, and then we don't have the other businesses that we take care of. It will just be taking care of these ordinances tonight. So the ordinance for, and our first item of business, of course, before we vote on these, is to establish that quorum, and we do have all members of council present. The ordinance for third reading is 6521. This is an ordinance amending the 2021 appropriation ordinance and authorizing the auditor to make an inter-fund transfer, and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Reisner. I'd like to make a motion to approve 06521.
Okay. And we have a second from Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Member Fall. This is amending our 2021 appropriation ordinance, and it includes the $90,000 we have discussed since last year for a water valve exercising equipment for the, from the water fund, $200,000 to the water fund for transfer so we can make our debt payment, and then also $25,000 to the sewer fund for equipment, including a vehicle and a motor for the wastewater treatment plant. Thank you, President Reisner.
Thank you. We have a motion and second for approval of 6521. Do we have any comments or questions from council members or elected officials? Or any of our attendees? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Nay? The ordinance, the motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. The ordinance is for second reading. Read the title, and then if there are, I'll pause briefly to see if there might be any comments or questions from council members, elected officials, or our attendees. Ordinance 7021 is an ordinance authorizing the disposal of certain fire department equipment, though longer needed for a municipal purpose, and is introduced by Councilmember And if no comments or questions, we'll move on to 7421. This is an ordinance authorizing the creation of an Athens uptown designated outdoor refreshment area known as the DORA, introduced by all members of council. If no questions or comments, the next one is 7521. This is an ordinance authorizing the disposal of a trackhoe in the Department of Engineering and Public Works that is no longer needed for a municipal purpose, introduced by Councilmember If no comments or questions, then the next one is 7621. That's an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a replacement trackhoe for Engineering and Public Works Department, introduced by Councilmember Grace. If no comments or questions, the next one is ordinance 7721. This is an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to accept bids where necessary and enter into contract for replacement of the roof on the city building and declaring an emergency. Yes, Councilmember Crowell?
I'd like to make a motion to amend 07721.
And I saw a second from Councilmember Grace. Yes. And so we have a motion and second to amend, and we'll now have the discussion and your explanation. Yes.
Okay, yes, we would like to change the fund that the original ordinance listed for the, this is a $200,000 appropriation for the replacement of the roof on the city building, as we've discussed earlier tonight. We originally had proposed that money coming from the capital improvements fund, and we want to switch that to the general fund, council 101.105.
And are there any comments or questions on this motion to amend? Councilmember Grace?
Thank you. I was just wondering if I could get an explanation of why the change.
Auditor Heck, would you like to chime in?
Sure, sure. I'm actually the one who asked for this. We've been pretty protective of our capital fund for five years, I should say the mayor has, and we've been successful in doing that. I feel that the reason, only reason to go to the cap fund for some of these expenses is if there isn't enough money in the fund that we're servicing that by. For example, the fire department repairs are going to be appropriated in the general fund under the fire department account lines, and so this would be appropriated in the general fund under the council budget for these repairs, because we do have money in the general fund to appropriate for these expenses.
And Councilmember Grace, do you still have another question? Yes.
Just, I appreciate that. I guess, as a member of council, perhaps feel a bit protective of the council budget and wondering, just, of course, this roof certainly benefits many entities other than council, but that explanation makes sense as far as protecting the capital budget or the capital fund. But a roof is pretty much a capital improvement.
It is. So, yeah, a lot of things that we do, and so I guess if you want to try to go back, but, you know, we pay for fire trucks out of the general fund, those are capital purchases, all kinds of things like that. But this does not affect the council budget. This is a brand-new appropriation of unappropriated money in the general fund that is available to be used for any department in the general fund. Does that make sense?
Okay, yes. So it's not depleting the council's operating budget for the year?
Not at all.
General funds that are available in the unappropriated balance. And I see a question from Councilmember Snedley.
Yeah, thank you, President Reisner and Member Crowell. Where does the capital budget stand now? And do we have that, do we have plans for that? And just to flush out some of Member Grace's questions.
I mean, I can put my two cents in here, but it might be for the mayor. I think that one of the projects in the back of his mind has been the armory, and to protect that at some point. Plus, it was pretty low, very, very low at some point. So we have about $1.2 million in there now. Because, you know, when you talk about a major capital expense, they get pretty expensive. You know, you guys have seen projects for millions of dollars go through, and that would be the same thing. You know, a roof for the community center, those are pretty major capital projects. And so, anyway, as I said, I should really let the mayor speak to that. But it's all, it's all general obligation tax money that can be used in other places when it comes right down to it. So, yeah, I just think we have money, we have a surplus of money, I shouldn't call it a surplus, in our general fund because of assistance we got for purchases or expenses last year from the CARES Act. And so we've lost revenue, but not to the extent that we weren't able to cover our budgeted expenses and still have some unappropriated money left, as we should have every year.
Dick, Mayor?
I, thank you, Auditor Heck. I think you summed it up well. I mean, we have been pretty protective, and at the forefront was the armory, quite honestly, in thinking that if we could build up enough revenue, because we were not finding, we weren't successful in getting the armory in the state cap budget. Not that we weren't trying, because we tried twice. We recently did apply, just, this is good for the public, didn't know as well. Senator Brown did open up the opportunity for people to make asks of earmark through the federal government. We did put the armory in for that as well. And then the cap could be a match for, if we were successful at getting something for the armory. the armory, that what is in the cap fund, you know, can be used if there is a match requirement. I'm not hearing that at this point in time. I'm hearing that these are just asked, but it could help with the armory unto itself. And I think something else that Auditor Heck just mentioned is that, again, this is a new appropriation that would come from the general fund, which does have a fair amount of money in it as well. So again, it's not taking away from anything in council's budget. It's, really, it's adding to, to replace the roof, and then getting this done, because we do need to protect all floors, but most importantly, the third floor with the government channels' equipment up there.
Thank you for the questions and the comments. Councilmember Fall, yes.
Well, I just want to say, you know, and Debbie, Debbie is in that office, you know, so we need, we need to take care of our people because they're the biggest asset that we have, and they have been, like, amazing, so that's, I think, a really important part. Thank you.
Thanks, okay. Auditor Heck?
One more comment. It's all the same pot of money. We could take that, we could appropriate that in lands and buildings, you know, in the mayor's office funds. It's the same pot of money, wherever you take it from, within the general fund, there's about 11, 12 now maybe, active departments within the general fund who use the same pot of money to spend things on. And so this is unappropriated money, unspoken for, that, you know, any one of our departments could actually appropriate, and it wouldn't change our, the budget we have going now, as far as that goes, which the general fund is unusual and different from the other funds, but I don't know if that helps anybody or not.
Any other questions or comments? We have the motion and second for amending 7721. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Composed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Thank you. 7821 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to pay a one-year membership fee to the outdoor recreation council of Appalachia, known as ORCA, to provide financial support from the city's transient guest tax for the Bailey's Trail system, along with other recreational activities. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell. And it looks like, yes, we do have a comment from Councilmember Smedley? Yes.
President Isley, do we have an update on where the county stands? This is contingent on what the county agrees to contribute. Do we know yet what their plans are?
As I understand, I mean, county certainly operates different, where they have a resolution that moves forward, and they have already acted on that. So as I understand it, they have $90,000 that they will use for their membership to be a part of ORCA.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 7921. This is an ordinance authorizing actions necessary to accept a Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, 2021 energized community grants funds and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Crowell. If no comments or questions, we'll move on to 8021. This is an ordinance amending the 2021 appropriation ordinance and authorizing the auditor to make an inter-fund transfer, introduced by Councilmember Crowell. Yes, and Councilmember Crowell?
I'd like to make a motion to amend 08021.
Second.
Motion and a second from Councilmember Smedley.
And the reason for the amendment is to add the aforementioned items to this appropriation ordinance, and that would be the $6,000 to the utilities billing office for furniture, as well as the $3,000 in two different funds, so $6,000 to, for EPW for meter, handheld meter reading devices. Thank you, President Isley.
Thank you. We have a motion and second for amending the ordinance. Any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. The next ordinance is 8120. This is an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to execute supplemental electric line easements and rights of way for the Strouds Run Clark Line with the Ohio Power Company, AEP, and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Fall. Okay, thank you. And now we'll move on to ordinances for first reading, 8221. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title III Administrative Provisions, Chapter 3.03 Executive, Other Officials, Section 3.03.07 Deputy Auditor, and this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. There are two ordinances here tonight regarding the same issue, which is a request by the city administration, in particular, the auditor's office, to move to a slightly different structure within the office, including increasing to two tax administrators. Previously, there were two positions and only one tax administrator, but the auditor would like to move to establishing, having two income tax administrator positions. These shall be appointed by the auditor and work under the auditor's direction. Thank you, President Isley.
Thank you. And do we have any comments or questions? If not, we'll move on to ordinance 8321, an ordinance amending the 2021 staffing levels authorized by ordinance 14120, as introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. As mentioned, this is simply changing the numbers in the staffing ordinance to indicate that we, the city, would have two tax administrator positions, and there would, and instead of three account administrators, there would be two account administrators. Thank you, President Isley.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? If not, we'll move on to ordinance 8421. This is an ordinance declaring a real and present emergency thus obviating the formal bidding procedure for structural repairs to the Athens Fire Department Headquarters, project number 343, and I believe this is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Isley. And yes, this is what we talked about in committee just a bit ago. Section 1 reads, "Due to the need for immediate action to make structural repairs to the Fire Department Headquarters, the City of Athens hereby declares an emergency situation pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 735.051." And section 2 is the appropriation ordinance amendment that appropriates from the unappropriated balance the sum of $50,000 to general fund fire, and section 3 authorizes the service safety director to expend up to that $50,000 for the structural repair of our fire station. And section 4 states that the ordinance shall be an emergency measure, putting it into effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? If not, I would welcome a motion to adjourn for the evening. So moved by Councilmember Fall and seconded by Councilmember Grace. I thank you all for being so patient and for all the good discussion, and so we'll have the vote. All those in favor to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye.